Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September 28, 2021. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Fishbein.
Here.
Laughlin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Shoretale.
Tada.
Here.
Testa. Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Sivoni.
Here.
Onto item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve consent agenda items A through F and G as amended.
Second.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Tada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer.
Good evening, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I was just wondering if the, I know the lot Simpson Court was done. Are the other two lots that were approved at the same time going to be done this year? Or are they being worked on?
The plan is to have them done this year. I believe there's a bid out. And we expect they'll, they'll be, the work will be performed this year.
Because the other ones, the other ones all completed, correct?
Pardon, I couldn't.
The other one, the other parking lot is completed?
The, the one at Simpson Court is completed.
So that went out to bid real early? This one just didn't go out to bid? For any reason, this one didn't go out to bid till now?
It just recently went out to bid, that's correct.
Nice, okay. The gazebo, that was also in the budget for this year. Is that being taken care of, or?
The gazebo, you mean the repair of it?
Yes.
I don't know if that's scheduled for this fall or not. Public works would be, I don't think engineering's involved with that, is that correct? I'm not sure what their timetable is for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public question and answer? Mr. Gross, two.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Um, I know you're going to be talking about the, what's it called? American Recovery Act tonight and what you can do with the money. Just for the council's own benefit here. Parks are allowed to be built. Lot of infrastructures allowed to be built, including roads. It's not as narrow as the mayor had said previous to this. So I just hope that, and, and there's, it should help everybody. I'm not saying that what his idea is wrong, but you should have it broad. You have $13 million coming or better. An idea is that there's a thing called community pool down the end of the road. That might be an allowable expense because it's for the community and it's outside. And these have to be pandemic related. And that could be a pandemic related option. I mean, you got to run this by, but hopefully you'll keep an open mind and hopefully the mayor will keep an open mind and look at some of those other options. Thank you. I don't, did you want to respond to that, Mr. Mayor? I saw you, those other items.
I'll be happy to keep an open mind.
I'll do them quick.
You're, no, you're just, you're hovering.
Well, because you're gonna, we're doing them real quick, be over in a couple minutes. The, I saw that they had a bid out for the person that you want to help you with American Recovery Act. I noticed that went out really quick. But at the last meeting, there was question of why you couldn't get an RFP for pension people to do it, where you've done it before. There's been already applications out there that have been done. So to the mayor, why, what was the reason again that you couldn't do the pension advisors this year?
I think what interrupted the process was Mr. Bo's departure. He was not able, for a number of reasons, to take on that task. And when he left, that, that left the deputy comptroller with a lot of work to assume. And he was not able to pick up those pieces. And hence, we needed the additional time to be able to go out to bid.
Just seems that it's such an important function, because at the last meeting, you mentioned that Nationwide, who was one of your things for the pensions, you had a review of it and they were overcharging us. And yet they're still in overseeing some of our pensions or advising. You would think that you'd want to go out to bid on them instead of letting them sit around for another year or more.
Well, I think there's confusion. Nationwide does not handle the town's pension funds. That's the 457, which is a deferred income plan, which is individual employees deferred income and it's invested. So we had a plan when Nationwide was going to change their plan. We had it reviewed by an outside firm and they were very helpful in pointing out some areas that we felt and agreed needed some reform. And one of those areas was a reduction in the fees that they were charging. But that is not pension funds.
It's not technically town's pension, but it's the employees' pension funds. It's the people who actually do the work for the town of Wallingford. It's their retirements. If they were being overcharged, you would think, your idea that the reason we look at these and you were concerned about the other pensions was because of oversight and doing the right thing to make sure, that's doing the right thing by your own employees, by making sure they're getting treated as best as possible. It's their retirement dollars.
The other factor is this was initiated at the point they changed their plan. Previously, it was a fixed, fixed return on investment. Even in 2008, I don't believe any employees lost any money. It was a guaranteed 3.5% every year. Nationwide then alerted everyone they were going to change that. And at that point, their fee schedule would change. And that is, we, we obtained the views of Sage View and they indicated, well, they, they needed to be reconfigured and gave us advice on it. But it, it didn't last for a long period of time, as far as the, as far as I know, as far as what their fees had been. The fees reflected the change in what the investment vehicles would be.
That investment vehicle, you're talking the guaranteed investment contract, that would still be an option to all employees. It should be in everybody's pension. If it isn't, it's not going to pass the test, because everybody has to have that option. You can't take people's money and just throw it into the stock market. You have to have an option where you can get guaranteed investment. You have puzzled look.
I don't understand what you just said.
Saying that, you're saying that they were changing it. They might have been offering more offerings, but that guaranteed investment contract, the three and a half percent, they might have changed the interest rate on it. But that kind of contract still is offered, and I'm sure it's offered in the 403Bs also, or whatever the town's offering. That always has to be an option, that people have to be able to put their money into a fixed investment, so there's no risk of loss.
Well, but there's a serious reduction in the interest. I think it's going to go down to something like a 1%. So there, there, there was a serious change, which obviously was not good news for people. And, and the town has some responsibility in overseeing exactly what options are available for investments. And that's why we hired Sage View and they were very helpful.
Again, I'm not going to argue the point, but you should have had more options than just Nationwide. That's where, because if it was 1%, that would have been below the normal averages back in the eight, nine. Thank you.
Anyone else for public question and answer? There being none, I close the public question and answer period. Before we move on, I just want to remind everyone that item eight has been withdrawn. So on to item six, which is the United Public Service Employees Union, Wallingford Educational Secretaries Local 424, Unit 31, from July 30, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. This is a contract. Good evening. If you could please introduce yourselves for the record.
Good evening. My name is Fran Thompson and I am the new Assistant Superintendent of Personnel for the Wallingford Public Schools.
Good evening. I'm Dominic Marone, the Business Manager for the Board of Ed.
Thank you. So what can you tell us about this contract, please?
Well, so we, so thank you again for, for this opportunity. We recently have concluded negotiations with the Clerical Union, which has 60 members. And the, the contract before you is a three-year contract. That would begin retroactively from July 1st and last through June 30, 2024. The wage, wages would include step increases for those below top step, but also you'll see in the general wage increase of 1.8% for those in the top step and 1% for those not at top step. Some of the provisions in the contract around insurance included the elimination of the excise tax provision and also added the provision where if you were part of, of the waiver benefit, you can, and then defer it or, or when off it, you can't get back on. So that was part of that. And then in addition to that, we, Article Six, Hours of Work, you'll see that there were some sections in the previous contract where we took some, we took a lot of the language that was included in a memorandum of understanding and we just dispersed it since it was more appropriately placed in, in different parts of the contract. So different areas in terms of article of work, we basically just language cleanup. And also in addition to that, we eliminated a memorandum of understanding whereby employees could take 30 days and if they wanted to try another position and keep their old position held there. So the, the, both the board and the union agreed to eliminate that former agreement. And that's, that's, it was, otherwise it's very similar in terms of everything else except the GWI, the general wage increase over the three years.
Thank you. Questions from the council? All right, there appear to be none. Any questions or comments from the public? There appear to be none. There is no action required for this contract to go into effect. So, gentlemen, thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you.
Onto item seven, we have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve appropriation of funds in the amount of $70,000 for the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Phase 3B Design Services from Quinnipiac Linear Trail Capital Fund to Phase 3B Design Services.
If you could please remind us who you are for the record.
Absolutely. Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer. And I am joined with Kathy Guernucci, co-chair of the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail Advisory Committee.
So Ms. Kapaschinsky, I think you were hired during COVID and you've participated in our meetings remotely. Is this the first time you're at a live in council, in chamber council meeting?
This is, first time in the hot seat.
Welcome and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about this, please?
Absolutely. So as the motion said, we're here to request the appropriation of $70,000 within Fund 302 for design services for Phase 3B of the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail. Phase 3B includes a pedestrian bridge over the Quinnipiac River Raceway, as well as a paved trail that connects the Fireworks Island Trailhead, the existing trailhead, to the sidewalk in Main Street in Yalesville. This piece is especially important because it finally connects us from two public ways. One, you know, Main Street in Yalesville and the other Hull Avenue. And so it truly gives pedestrians and cyclists an alternate route rather than navigating the busy state road. Currently, the Fireworks Island Trailhead is only accessed by vehicles. There's an existing bridge owned by the condos and that only allows vehicle access over it, no pedestrians or cyclists. There was an effort over the past year or two to purchase the bridge, possibly from the condo association, but the president was not able to get enough support from the owners. We did receive bids for Phase 3B Design Services in June of 2019, but no bids were awarded at that time. It's a little bit before my time, but I'm thinking it's because we were trying to buy the bridge, so didn't want to award, you know, a bid for work that might not have been needed. The low bidder, Mylona McBroom, has since been renamed as SLR and they are willing to keep their bid price of $135,000. The bid, once completed, would give us a full construction and permitted package that we could advertise for construction. The Trail Advisory Committee has just under $69,000 remaining in their recreational trails grant that they are going to be putting towards these design service fees. So with that $69,000 and the appropriation requested of $70,000, it would give us enough money to hire SLR and get this design permitted and ready for construction.
Thank you. So forgive me, when I hear SLR, I think of a camera. What's that stand for?
It's just SLR Consulting. It's a consulting group. They were bought out. It's Mylona McBroom.
So it's not an abbreviation of a role, it's the name of the firm?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that help. Counselor Fishbein.
I harken back to single lens, single lens reflexes, that's what SLR stood for. But anyway.
Harken back.
I can't say, harken, harken.
They still exist.
Yes, they do. So am I to understand that this is just for design?
Correct.
So obviously a design, you know, if you're going to put neon lights on posts and things like that, design has to be within certain confines of expense, right? So what direction are we giving, if any, the designer as to their boundaries?
So there, there was concept plans done before I started and that concept includes the pedestrian bridge, which does have to be elevated a certain level above the flood plain, as well as, you know, walls leading up to that. Also includes a paved path. So there is a concept that the town has, you know, been, been working with and has approved, that they will be taking from there. And SLR did complete that concept. So we shouldn't lose anything in translation there. There is an easement, an existing easement on the southern border of the condo property that the design will be using.
Yeah, no, I'm aware, because, you know, I've met with the residents out there a few years ago, there was a big dispute and, and, you know, what I've seen appears to resolve that dispute without having to do something with the bridge. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I want to see this happen. I don't want to see a design come out and then the price tag is 2.5 million and I hear, well, it's not, it's too much, right? So I understand you have concepts. Let me ask you, how much is it projected this is supposed to cost?
The current estimate is at 1.1 million. And we have, for construction funds, we have a $400,000 community connectivity grant that's been awarded. And I believe there's also $110,000 from Friends of the Trail Group that they are okay donating for construction. And we will also be looking at applying for the recreational trails grant on the town side for construction funds. That's coming out now.
Okay, so as we sit here today, $2,021, we're talking, you're about $700,000 short. Is that, that's generally?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it might help just to realize that the 1.1 million is, 400,000 to 500,000 of that is for the bridge itself. The remainder is for the connection up to Route 150 in Yalesville. So there's a significant expense associated with the topography, associated with easement that the town has for the trail to leave the bridge and reach 150 in Yalesville. So it's not a $1.1 million bridge. The bridge is expected to be, what, 400,000 or 500,000, right? Okay. I, I understand. And I know, you know, because I think the first time we talked about this with your predecessor, you know, it's, it's a significant dip there to the south of the bridge. And yeah, I think we recognized that that, that was going to be an issue. I just, as I said, I'd like to see this happen. And I just, I'm fully supportive of what's before us here tonight. I'm hoping that this advances us. I just don't want to be here another, you know, year from now, hearing that it's too much, so. But I, I thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So just, just for my own edification on this, this is going to be a connecting path for bicycles, pedestrians. Now, we'll still be using the other bridge for car access, correct?
Correct.
So I guess that's, that's where I wanted to lead my question with. So I know, I remember the effort that was presented about possibly buying out that other bridge to at least alleviate part of the concerns, you know, but there still would be that access issue with people that wanted to walk or push their bikes through the property. So with, with the condominium association not, not giving enough support to sell the bridge, we maintain our automobile rights. I don't want to have a situation where, great, we've got this awesome pedestrian way and that we have no ability to go through with the car. So that's, that's still going to, we're still going to have that access, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was, that was really my only concern. I've, I've used the trail since its inception. I've enjoyed it with my, you know, myself personally with my family. And I'm always excited to see any efforts to go and extend and, and, you know, add on to that area. I'm really hopeful when I see these rails trail programs in other parts of the state where there's a lot of internet connectivity, that we might be able to get somewhere close to that as trails come down from Meriden, they build up maybe from North Haven. So I, I want to be as supportive of this as, as I can be as well. So I appreciate all the legwork that's gone into this and I'm hoping for its success as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Anyone from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Shoretale.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Sivoni.
Yes. Not a bad result for your first visit.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, on to item nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an agreement for the purchase of 79 Tyler Mill Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Attorney Farrell, you might want to grab a microphone.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And get a little closer to it, I'm sorry.
Thanks. The proposed purchase price is the assessed value, or I'm sorry, the appraised value of 150,000. The property is presently owned by 10 individuals. Three are deceased and those interests have never been probated. The town, through the law department, has contacted attorneys who are willing to do those estates for $3,000 plus expenses in the amount of $500 per estate. The third estate is going to be done by the owner, by an heir of the deceased. Obviously, if he can't do it, we would have to come back and get somebody, some attorney to do it. All the expenses, the legal expenses, are going to come out of the heirs' proceeds. The town is going to have an environmental study done. The cost of the study will be at the town's expense. We have a, a price of $4,000 on that. That will be a town expense if in fact, the environmental study indicates that there is hazardous waste and the remediation has to be done. The heirs would be responsible for doing that, but they have the right to back out of the purchase and sale if in fact, that's required and they find the price too high. That's about all I have to report. This is the last piece in the Tyler Mill area. There's a map, which I think was included with your agenda, showing where it is. We can cut off electricity to that, secure the area more. I know the law department is excited about getting this piece for the town. And I'll share with you that many, many years ago, I was playing golf with the president of New Haven Water Company, who said, "Jarrett, we were under water to dispose of 1,000 acres out there. You think the town of Wallingford would be interested in it?" I assured him he was, and we were. So I hope the town goes through with purchasing this. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for our clarification, we're just approving the agreement tonight. We're not talking about funding.
That's correct. This is just the agreement.
Thank you. Counselor Shoretale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I do have a question about funding. I just want to follow up and I, just because I think I'm for this, I don't see why I wouldn't be, but I just want to make sure we're paying for it. And Mayor, I appreciate your correspondence on September 24th. I just want to clarify that the, I had asked what the, where this was coming from. You said the cap and non-fund. Once it goes through probate and all these things, all has to get to that point, I realize that. In the memo, you said the balance was $1,082,000. I just want to clarify, that's the unassigned balance?
Yes.
Got it? Okay, that was my, I just want to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, all right, so Attorney Farrell, I understand what you were saying before. So the, all the costs for the potential environmental cleanup on this property would be bore by the, by the heirs?
Not the cost of the environmental study. That, we have a price of $4,000 on it. That will be our, our expense.
So being that the town is so interested in acquiring this particular piece of property, would there be a position where the heirs may want to back out and the town would be interested in engaging in some, or if not all, of the cleanup to get the piece of property?
Contracts can always be renegotiated based upon circumstances that are discovered. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So in other words, if the, so if the heirs say no because of the cost, it could always come back to us to take a second look at it if we wanted to?
Yeah, especially if at that point, we, we feel we know the cost. You know, you're, you're probably familiar with some you're probably familiar with, sometimes when remediation is required, people are somewhat uncertain as to what the cost may be. If it's a contained situation and you can get a real good feel that it's not just a guess, you know.
So, we have to have a contract? So, if I'm understanding correctly, then we have to have a contract signed with the, with the heirs before we can engage in the environmental study?
Yeah, people don't want you on your, on their property just prospecting of what might be there. Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. And then my other question is a financial one. So, when we entered into this fiscal year and we ran through the budget, there was an amendment in the budget process to divert some funds from the, from the, the money that we're talking about, where we're talking about this money's going to come from, to reduce the mill rate. Are there any concerns about not having adequate funding in the CCRA money to move forward?
Are you talking about the money that...
I'm sorry.
Came from the electric division and then was earmarked for community pool? I think it was $1 million.
There was money earmarked for community pool, and then there was other money that was applied to the budget from the cap and non, I believe.
I'm not familiar with that.
That money was taken into account. So...
Okay, so...
That's why that balance is at the 1 million. It would have been 2 million if you guys didn't do that action.
Right. Okay. So, I just wanted to be certain that, so the, the amendment to the budget really has no impact on the town's finances at the end of the day? I mean, there's the money that was in the account that's not there, obviously, but it doesn't impair our ability to handle this transaction or anything of that nature?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Anyone from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marrone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes. Motion passes. On to item 10. Discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. Counselor Testa, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for all the information that was forwarded to us at my request. I appreciate that. As you know, I've, I've raised this issue on several occasions. And one recurring theme of my questioning has always been that we get assurances that the town council would be involved in a, in a meaningful and active way. And on at least two occasions, I was assured by you directly that this would be the case. We were told pretty much only that a consultant was going to be hired to help navigate the numerous guidelines and rules and regulations that are associated with the money we received through the American Rescue Plan Act. And that, that pretty much was the extent of what was shared. I did ask that all this information be shared with us. And, and it's a lot. I see that. All the packages of information that seemed to provide guidance on what can and cannot be done, how it should be done, and so forth. I don't, never intended to be, you know, to be able to go through this and do what the consultant will do, but it's good that we have all this. Again, that's what, I, that was the extent of what I thought was happening at this point. I think it's reasonable to then expect that a consultant would be hired and then we would be, we thereafter would have meetings to develop together a game plan. In the meantime, I've heard of meetings with businesspeople involving our economic development specialists, discussions with the Economic Development Commission. And I have to say, what was the most surprising development? A pretty detailed op-ed piece from Mr. Stephen Knight, which seemed to indicate that he was told quite a bit about what the plans already were. I read in the paper that what was going on. I read in the paper that the, at some point, the Economic Development Commission would be making decisions as to who gets what. I read in the paper how things were being done already. Meetings were, had already been held. I read about all this in an op-ed from Steve Knight, not even in a story in the paper, but from him. And one thing stood out. No mention whatsoever of the town council at all. So, that just piqued my interest. Why does Mr. Knight know about plans already in place, things that are already going to happen, things that are happening, and none of it involves any involvement by the town council? I was just a little disturbed by that, since I was assured we would be involved in it. So, one of the things I requested was not only these large packets of information about rules, regulations, and government things. And I would, by the way, I would like to commend you, Mr. Mayor, on, on the involvement you've been having. I know you've been interacting with people and you attended some type of training or, or had meetings with different people. So, you've been doing, on the ball on your end, and that's good. But I specifically requested a report on plans. I requested in this agenda item, the, a review of the RFP. Well, we have a copy of the RFP. Because my concern is, what are we actually asking this person to do? My understanding would be they're here to help us navigate. I'm just, I'm not sure how much we're going to be having that person or this company involved in the administration of the funds themselves. But, so that's why I wanted to review the RFP, to see what we were asking for. But then that's all we got in our packet. I also asked for plans for the establishment of a committee to administer the funds, which I assumed we were going to be a part of, and specifically what role the town council will play in the process. That's what I'd like to know more about tonight. And I requested, in addition to the RFP, specifically, any memos that have been issued to EDC personnel or anyone else regarding activities already underway, any notes from any meetings that have taken place with businesspeople or others already actively involved in activities related to this. We haven't received any of that. So, I guess tonight I would just like to know, aside from putting on an RFP, what has been going on, what is going on, and why, to this point at, at least, have we not been involved?
Well, there are no memos because no memos have been written. And to my knowledge, there are no meetings. I've had discussion with the economic development specialist, Tim Ryan. I've had discussions with Tim Senna, Finance Department. I've had discussions with the Law Department. But there, there is no quote "plan" unquote. We need to hear how to structure this by talking to the consultant. There's an enormous amount of record keeping necessary, and that, we, we need to have an idea of how that is to be accomplished. I would anticipate certainly economic development playing a big role, and I suspect this will be a daytime activity. People filing applications, coming in, applying for, for money. Council certainly will have to appropriate funds. The rules that will be applied by whoever is making that decision will have to be approved as part of an overall direction to whatever committee is set, set up. But all of that still has to be developed. Until there's a better understanding of what the process has to be from a consultant, I, I don't have an answer for that myself. So, whatever people have written about, certainly I've had no discussion with Mr. Knight. I've had only discussions with the people that I've mentioned. And all of this is in preparation for ultimately putting together the nuts and bolts of a process. And a lot of towns don't seem to even be dealing with the, the application process for private businesses' individuals. Many of them are just looking at it as a way of funding municipal projects. I, I don't take that view. I think the most important thing is being able to provide some redress for people and businesses who have lost as a result of the COVID and the pandemic. So, that's going to take some work to put together. And until I can hear from someone who's familiar with what the federal government's going to require, I'm not sure what the structure will look like. Obviously, someone will be, have to be taking significant records and there'll have to be forms filed, et cetera. And I, I, right now, do not know what that will look like.
I understand that the, we will need someone with a high degree of expertise to take care of all of that administrative stuff. What my interest is and was and will continue to be is in having the council involved with the administration in setting up the overall game plan. In other words, I don't disagree with you that we should be looking at opportunities to perhaps provide relief to private businesses and/or potentially individuals as a possibility in addition to maybe using, as you said, a lot of towns are talking about just doing projects. But that's, 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 but that's a philosophical discussion that we should be a part of. That's the point I'm trying to make. We should be a part of that. I don't believe that we should only be involved when it comes time to approve the appropriations. Because that's where it's headed. It's headed where we're not going to be involved. But when decisions are made on where, what money goes where, maybe we'll be given the opportunity to say yes. Because maybe that is the only thing by charter we are supposed to do, if that. And I'm looking for, I was, six months ago, I was just looking for a good faith gesture that, right from the beginning, whether it's daytime or nighttime activities, that the council be involved in talking about, what do we want to do with this money? This is a big philosophical discussion. Do we want to, you know, do we want to literally help, for example, I'm just throwing examples out there. Do we want to provide relief to people who were behind on rent if they weren't able to get enough relief from the program that that was supposed to provide? Are we going to help landlords? Are we going to help businesses? Which businesses? Are we going to still help businesses that might have received the money from the government already? These are critical questions. And the reason we need to have this all out in the open is because you don't want people in the public thinking, well, that particular place or that particular restaurant got $50,000 because, you know, they're friends with this one. And I don't expect, I'm not expecting that to happen by, by the administration. I, but we don't want that appearance. And I just think we should throw it all out there now and let the consultant walk us through what you can spend money on, how do you spend it, what are the procedures and so forth. But we should be talking about, how do we want to divvy this money up? How much of it do we want to dedicate to potentially infrastructure work, if any? Those are the kind of discussions I, I would like us all to be having together. I, that's not something I want the Economic Development Commission to be deciding because it's not their job. It's not their role. They can assist us in reaching out to the business community when the time comes. But I just would like us involved early on in a more meaningful way. And that's really all I'm asking for again. And I haven't seen it yet. And, and I, all I will say is this, Steve Knight doesn't write anything without having talked to a lot of people. And if Steve Knight writes something like that, he didn't just make it up. And there were things in there that made me grip the paper a lot harder than I normally do when I was reading it. Let's just say that. So, that, thank you.
I don't know who he talked with. I know he didn't talk with me, so I don't know. I didn't see the article. I didn't read it. But I, I think there's some confusion. Where it's an application process, that will be a process by itself. If the town is going to use the money for a particular project or program, obviously, that involves the council anyway. Because you depend upon the administration, whether it's utilities or wherever, to say, you know, here's a project that would, can use these funds. That's a discussion, what projects, et cetera. What fits the model that this ARPA is set up to deal with. But when we're talking about individual businesses or individuals coming in, that's going to be a completely different. And we will be able to show, here's, here's a suggestion of what this is going to look like. It's going to have to, it'll, council will be, be reviewing that. You'll have to appropriate funds to have any of it happen. It can't happen without funding. But you need some documents, some indication of what is suggested before we can look to change it. And right now, I don't know what to suggest because I don't have enough information. But, yeah, there's, there's a partnership involved here. But I think we're ahead of where we need to be.
Well, I am willing to, once again, I guess, take you at your word, that we're still real early in this. And the council is going to be actively involved in making decisions about how these funds are utilized, if that's what I just heard. But I want to stress, I would be very disappointed if that involvement ends up being one of approving things when they're brought to us. And that, that was just kind of described again. I'd like us to be involved in the early stages, like now. Because it appears to me that if we had a discussion and, you know, just like in any business, and just brainstormed and listed, these are all these things I think we could do with this money if we had the opportunity. And sort of whittle it down to what seems reasonable. By the time we get that done, then this consultant can look at that and say, well, you know what? 1, 2, 3, yes. 4, 5, 6, no. And, you know, you, that, as opposed to them telling us what we can do with the money, or the Economic Development Commission recommending what we do with the money, or the administration recommending what we do with the money. I'd like us all involved. So, I mean, I've said this a number of times, and I'll stop now. But that's what I'm hoping for. I'll go one more where I'll say, okay, you promised. Let's see what happens next. Thank you.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, I hope that this body agrees with Vinnie. I certainly do. That we have had many times where we've wanted to say, let's plan ahead. What is our vision? And this should give us that sort of ability. And I, I'm gonna...
You just need to stay close to the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna jump off of the mayor's daytime answer as well. I think this body really should be encouraging that we're looking into internet, dedicated fiber access. Or... Wait. Oh, sorry. Okay. So, if you didn't hear me, all right. So, I'm agreeing with Vinnie that we all should be looking at a vision. And I want to talk about the mayor's daytime comment. People coming in and simply making applications. In this town, that is the way most applications occur. I'd like this body to be thinking about internet, dedicated fiber run, things that bring us into this era for functioning for our town. This actually should be something that we're all looking at as necessary. Pandemic and people working from home, this building, this administration was ill-prepared for that and really very problematic. So, I think one of the number one things with this money needs to be bringing us into a functioning of this era. This is not going to be our last virus that acts like this. If you look at the science, they knew this was coming. We will have more. Everyone needs to be readjusting based on that. And so, remote access with down hall is a must. And I appreciate Vinnie bringing this forward because it does point out that we are not often given a lot of chance to help in things that we would like to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chortel.
I didn't know if the mayor wanted to. Okay. I thought the mayor was going to speak, that's why. I appreciate Counselor Testa bringing it up. I tend to agree with what Counselor Testa said and what Counselor Morgenstein said. I, because I struggle a little bit with the usual separation of powers because I feel like the way we're set up in general, even during the year, let, let's take out... like the way we're set up in general, even during the year, let, let's take out the government funding, just think about during the course of the year. Let's say we all think that there should be, you know, they should redo the balcony and do something in here. We could think that, but the, the administration is, is by charter is the one that has to propose that for us to do anything. So I mean, typically, they run the town and we, we approve the funding. So I, I don't know how this would be different. And then the mayor just, you know, said, I mean, he, he, and this is my second point. He talked about some other towns are doing big scale projects and, and he feels that he, he wants to look more at individual relief, but he wants this consultant to sort of map out how that would work. And I, I, so I see that. I, I don't agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I don't, I would not dismiss doing a big project personally. Because what I worry about is handing out money even through an application process years after. I mean, we're going to hand, I, I understand how much businesses have suffered, but, but the people getting them, I mean, who's getting the money in 2023 or 2024? They're the ones that have survived, you know? It's, so that's my fear versus, you know, lower the sewer rates or, you know, I think one, North Haven's talking about building a splash pad or something. There, so I don't, I would just keep an open mind about that. Go ahead, you, you want to respond?
Well, you know, I have spent the time to read the legal language and there are a lot of things being discussed that I do not think will in any way be approvable under ARPA.
Right, that's the key.
I mean, the, the, the whole thing is the rescue plan from the pandemic.
Yeah.
And obviously, the private sector was significantly hurt by the pandemic and the closing of businesses in order to meet the issues surrounding the pandemic. So I, I just, I have a hard time saying, well, we received this money, but we're not going to address the needs of the businesses and people who've suffered and we're going to find ways to spend, spend it for governmental purposes. Certainly, there is money that will be available for governmental purposes. But to my knowledge, there's only three areas that can be used for non-pandemic related. And that is infrastructure for water, sewer, and broadband. Obviously, Frontier and others are out there doing broadband now. So water and sewer is the only thing that I'm aware of that can be beyond the, the label of pandemic, the COVID issues. Everything else is related to that. Now, if a consultant comes in and says, oh, no, here's a clause over here, whatever, okay, you know, we can take a look at that. But my reading of it, it's, it's very tight.
Yep.
So the Treasury Department is relying upon us to make the right decisions and use the money in the appropriate way. And I think we all agree, we want to do that.
I, I totally get that. I would still then lobby for sewer or broadband. Because I just worry about the process, not the, I don't worry about the process. I think the process would be good. But I worry about handing a check to a business three years later that survived. And they're, and, and they suffered, but they're still around and they're getting the business. I like Counselor Testa's example of people who couldn't, you know, afford their rent. So I think whatever we do should be means tested and, and I'm confident the consultant will look at that. You know, the, two other thoughts on this, Counselor Testa, to your point about feedback, we, there's nothing stopping us from having this on the agenda, having a public workshop. And I would, and I don't, I'm not going to, I mean, I would do it after the election. I would, and I'm not saying in January, but I'm saying I would wait, this could be politicized and I would let, I would not want to do it before November, but do it in November or December and invite the public and say, come to the mic and, you know, probably get two people. But I mean, at least it's, it's, that's something where we can say, we opened it up to the public. They have whatever they, their thoughts were. My other thought is just let Craig do it. I mean, Craig would gladly decide who gets the money. So that's just, that's my last thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, speaking of, Counselor Fishman.
Well, I'm glad to hear that my being environmentally conscious, that I, I'm not the, at least Counselor Testa still gets a hard copy of the newspaper that he can, he can grip steadily when he gets disturbed. But anyway, because I get electronically. I save trees. Anyway, we go on. I certainly wrap my arms around the concern here. And, you know, because I look at the nonprofits, you know, we have nonprofits in our town that do really great work. And through the pandemic, you know, a lot of times they operate by way of fundraisers. They were unable to do those fundraisers. They didn't get that money. They still had to provide those services and in some cases, even greater level of services than they do have to do pre-pandemic. And, you know, they're still hurting. So that's another area that we haven't talked about here. You know, I think ultimately, I'm hearing, I, I get it from the article that was in the newspaper, that there may be a grant application of some sort in the future. You know, perhaps the gatekeeper is that the grant document comes before us. We talk about it. We talk about that criteria. If you are a X, Y, and Z that are impacted in a certain level, this is what you have to prove, those kinds of things. But ultimately, you know, separation of powers provides that if we don't have that, the administration, the executive branch has to come to us for approval. And, and I guess if we didn't approve with the process and we didn't approve of the selection, we could just say no to certain particulars of that request, which would end up with the money being banked and not used, which is, you know, really not the responsible way to deal with this. So I totally agree, you know, and I know there was a discussion about, you know, maybe a commission of some sort would be appropriate here to talk about, you know, because ultimately, it's this consultant who's going to drill down on what is okay, what's not okay. We want to have that exchange, that individual. We want to be part of that process from day one until the out. So I, I'm keeping my eyes out there. I'm certainly watching. I'm concerned. I agree, there should not be, you know, these major infrastructure expenditures. I agree with the mayor's philosophy wholeheartedly. The intent of the money should be to assist those that are negatively impacted by the pandemic and the governmental rules with regard to the pandemic. So, but I, I think that we should be keeping our ears and our eyes open with what happens in the future. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's funny, because when we talked about this last time, I said it was a Herculean effort to try to come up with the, with how to spend this money. And that certainly hasn't changed. You know, gov, the pandemic has been great for government, quite frankly. I mean, state, federal, and local. It's, financially, it's been great for government at all levels. The state of Connecticut, who's been running deficits, you know, year after year after year, suddenly finds themselves in the black. So I don't think that spending this money on any governmental purpose is really either in the spirit of the, of the legislation nor is it in our best interest, really. But again, I don't know how you give it to businesses without having some sort of, without making it appear to be some kind of cronyism, right? Because again, like Counselor Shortell said, it's, it's only the survivors. So I'm actually okay with hearing what the consultant says. And then if we don't like it, you reject it. I mean, that's, I guess what this body's for. But we need some kind of direction. Because we could sit in a room and we could all come up with ideas on how to spend the money, right? There's an episode of The Simpsons, which is a great episode, where they, where the town gets like a windfall from, from Mr. Burns for, for something. And they end up building a monorail because this is what they think is in the best interest of the town, right? And so as ridiculous as it is, it's a great example because you have the nine of us sit in a room and all come up with ideas, you know, maybe we think broadband into Town Hall is the best way to go. But I mean, who does that, who does that really help? It doesn't help the citizens of the town. It helps us up here, the nine of us, right? So, and I'm not belittling your idea. I'm just saying that, you know, by way of example, I, I think we just have to be very careful about how, how we spend it. So you need some sort of direction. And I guess where are you going to get that from? I think the consultant actually seems like a pretty reasonable, reasonable idea. So I'm eager to hear what the consultant has to say. And then I think you, you know, from that point, you start looking at what, you know, you could certainly reach out what they have to say and take it in a different direction. But we need, we're very unfocused at this point, you know, talking about this. So it's a great discussion to have. I just, I wish that we had some, some parameters, I guess, to, with which to look at this outside of just the, the language of the legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am a little bit concerned with us waiting until it's time for us to appropriate the money because I, my concern is that if, if some of us think that maybe the money should be spent on something and then it gets before us and it's all spent on business relief, our only opportunity is to just say no. And then that may look, you know, anti-business, which is not, you know, doesn't look good because maybe we're not anti-business, we just didn't have any other option. And so I, I would too like to be involved more from the beginning. Even just in this brief discussion, I heard some ideas that I maybe wasn't aware of or hadn't thought of. The nonprofits idea came up because I know they, they definitely struggled during the pandemic. So I might suggest that maybe we each submit to the administration and maybe the couns, the consultant can review it and the ideas that we have. So maybe we each come up with three ideas of, I would love to see the money spent on one, two, and three. And then the consultant can maybe come back and say, you know, these are the things we can do, these are the things that we, we cannot do with this money. And maybe there's an idea and they're the, the administration or, or anyone up here hadn't thought of that we could do and would be beneficial to the town. So I too like the idea of us just being a little more involved and hopefully the consultant can kind of guide, guide how the money is able to be spent. Thank you.
That's all I have from the council. Anything from the public?
Bob Gross Longhill wrote, question to the chair, through the chair to the mayor. Has the mayor talked to other communities on what they're doing with their grants?
Yes, general conversations.
Because I know some communities have gotten together. You can also regionalize this money if you want to do a regional plan, do a project of some type. You could regionalize the money also. I'm not saying for long if you would do that, but you can regionalize it, such as the linear trail. If you want to do something without this, when you read the act, a lot of it has to do with outdoor activities. They want things that are pandemic friendly. They offer for businesses. The town can work with businesses to help set up outdoor dining, sidewalks, those types of things are in this also. So I just hope, just listening to the mayor, he's got an open mind, but there's, if he says he read it, I don't think he did. Because there's, there's all these other things that you can do. You talked about some town doing the splash pad. I did not know that. I mentioned community pool because those are things that the, this act is. You mentioned about helping renters. In the act right now, you can take money, hire people to help people recover money that is out there now through the state or the feds to cover rent and those types of things. Instead of having them wait a year or two, when it might be too late, you can do that now with the money. And then that's not a big expense because there, there is a ton of money sitting up at the state for renters reimbursement funds. What else was there? There is, I'm trying to remember some of the things. Have you talked to CCM? Are we a member of CCM anymore?
Yes, we're a member of CCM.
I know other communities are, just reading the register, sorry. But other communities are, was it a joke? Other communities have gone to CCM for guidance. Have you done any of that?
We attended an OPM seminar, I don't know, a month ago or more, which personally I found, well, seriously lacking in any kind of substantive direction. We have another one coming up sometime later this week or next week. But yeah, there's, there's, there's opportunities for learning and we take advantages of, of those things. But until we get down to the nuts and bolts of it, which we need a, a, an informed expert on to help us, we're, we're, we're not going to be focused enough to come forward with a plan. And will there be overlaps? Yeah, I think there are a series of other grant programs now that will probably be overlapping with the ARPA. Right now, I'm aware of those, but right now, if we're going to deal with the ARPA, it has to be dealt with within the rules of the ARPA. And these other grant programs may not have, in fact, they do not have the same rules. So we take one step at a time, but certainly the initial step is to hire the consultant.
That's why, to help renters, which is an admirable thing to do. You wouldn't want to take this money to help renters when there's a pool of money sitting here that can help the renters.
Well, I, I would say this, if someone in this town is hurting and we're going to say, no, you can't come to us. We could help you, but we're not going to help you with this because you can go somewhere else to the state. As far as I'm concerned, that is the wrong approach to take. Local government has a role to play for the citizens and businesses within its jurisdiction. If someone else fails to do it or they have to go somewhere else, that's, that's up to them. But if they come to us and need help, we should be there to help.
So what I'm saying, so what, are you saying that if somebody comes in and says tomorrow, I need help paying my rent, you're going to write them a check?
What was the first step I said we had?
Well, that's why I'm saying you could automatically...
No, no, to answer my question, what was the first step?
You're going to hire a consultant.
Right. So we set this up appropriately.
But that takes time. What I'm saying is, you can do, in the act right now, you can hire somebody to help all these people through the process to get the money that is sitting out there right now. And to the infrastructure and so forth, helping the town here, helping workers in the Town Hall if there's another pandemic, which is possible, nobody, you know, nobody can predict the future. To make them safer, better ventilation in Town Hall, better internet access for them and for the community to reach them. Those are things that you could do with some of this money. I'm not saying all the money, but you could make little tranches to pay, this is for this, this is for that. And that's what other communities are doing. They're not taking whole hog one thing, they're spreading it out.
Well, what's the first step?
Some of them are already doing it. So I, and then...
And if they want to take the risk of doing it improperly and have the federal government, Treasury Department come looking for the money later on, I don't want to be part of that.
I think if you read the rules, they're pretty basic on some of these items, such as helping citizens recover money, et cetera. Ventilation, outdoor activities, parks. There's a whole paragraph there on park renovation of parks. Because again, they want outdoor places for people to go. I know it's talking to the wall, I'm not going to talk anymore. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there being none, on to item 11. I mean, I'm sorry, we have nothing for item 11. Correct, Mayor? Then on to item 12. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 1-225F and Section 1-206B with respect to the pending matter of Town of Wallingford versus Girachi at all. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session and I would ask the public to kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you.